At 7:00 PM, we'll call the meeting to order. Alicia, do we have a quorum, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Contreras is present. Councilmember Van Zant is absent. Councilmember Rennenbaum is absent. Mayor Moss is present. Councilmember Young is present. And Councilmember Perney is present.
Thank you. This time, would you please rise? We'll have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Could we have a motion to approve the minutes of the May 25 meeting, please?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes for the May 25 meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Regular agenda items, we're going to move number five up for an update on the Fort Worth water project.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council, Pat. Brian had asked me to come this evening and give you a brief update on the project. So I've got a few notes to pass along and then be happy to answer any questions you may have. So I'm sure you guys could probably give this portion of the presentation for me. We have three components to this project. So I'll give you a report on each one of them, starting with what we call the Fort Worth Willow Park Pipeline Project. Keep in mind that that's more than just the pipeline. It includes the connection to the Fort Worth pipeline there at Farmer Road and then also the temporary meter station in El Chico Trail. So just some information for you on that. So basically, the cross-country pipeline component of that, if you will, is basically complete. If you drive along Access Road of I-20, there's still obviously a lot of disturbed earth that they'll need to clean up, some other loosens to tie up. That's obviously part and parcel of what they do for the project. And those components may be delayed by weather, but obviously, we don't need the grass replanted to operate the pipeline. Related to pipeline work specifically, the major pieces they still have left are installation of the pipeline underneath Farmer Road. And then also, there's a connection to the existing 12-inch water line in El Chico Trail. Honing in on the El Chico site specifically, the contractor, Mountain Cascade, was scheduled to begin the work there yesterday. The rain got in the delay of that. I drove by there a while ago and it didn't look like they've got out there today, so I'm guessing they'll start that tomorrow. And then also drilling down on the Fort Worth connection component of it. We really haven't had a delay there due to the rain. We've had a delay due to the delivery of a key 36-inch valve that's part of that tie-in. We've been told that valve will arrive tomorrow, so keep your fingers crossed on that. And then, once that valve arrives, they'll be able to proceed with Fort Worth's OK on that to make the connection to the Fort Worth pipeline. That does involve a shutdown of the Fort Worth pipeline, so they have to approve that. Right now, that's scheduled to happen next week, probably the 15th, typically, the week from today. Again, weather dependent. I just see the kind of a schedule update there. Mountain Cascade is still holding to their original scheduled completion date of July 25. I should point out that that is a final completion date that hopefully, knock on wood, that the operational components of the project will be ready to go before the 25th. So the 25th will be a final completion date. Just to reiterate, these key milestones are coming up. Valve arrival for tomorrow. The Fort Worth shutdown approval. The Fort Worth tie-in scheduled for June 15. And then the El Chico temporary meter station work, it's also scheduled to be completed in early July. All right, then, moving on to the second component. This is the Willow Park to Hudson Oaks Pipeline piece. Wildstone is our contractor on that one. The last official schedule we have from them still had the completion date of August 26 of this year. However, I think they have really been impacted a lot more by the rainy weather than Mountain Cascade has. And that's probably due to the fact that they have a longer stretch of pipeline to work with there. So we're, we haven't heard yet, but we're really anticipating that they'll come back and say that they're going to need more time past August 26. But obviously, that's not the critical path for that. That's really only needed until we go with a full operation next summer. That's not needed for what we're trying to accomplish this year. Then last but not least, we have the pump station component of the project. Again, we kind of refer to it as the pump station, but that's also the ground storage tank at El Chico. It's the permanent meter station for Fort Worth, and it's the meter station for Hudson Oaks at the edge of Hudson Oaks. As you know, we received its on those. Council took action at the last meeting to accept that low bidder, which is Mila Contractors. We've been working with them to get their contract documents executed. And then that goes into the Water Development Board for their approval. So we need to get that approval as quickly as we can because we can't issue a notice of receipt until we have that approval. But based on our anticipated date of getting that approval, which right now, we're targeting mid-July, the contract allows Mila 274 calendar days to complete the work. If you do the math on that, that puts us right at mid-April 2022 to complete the pump station that would connect the two pipelines and allow the full transmission to flow both Willow Park and to Hudson Oaks. And then, real briefly, on one other item that's related to this, we did get earlier today the signed amendment to the wholesale water agreement for Fort Worth. Brian has that now, so that seems to be all i's dotted and t's crossed on that. So with that, certainly, I have the entertaining questions. Try to answer them as best I can.
I think it sounds like you all, the contractors have done a great job, try to keep on pace.
They really have. I think Mountain Cascade in particular has taken Brian's words, our words, that, you know, really serious about this schedule. It's very important. And I think it was key that they mobilized multiple crews before we got into this wet weather period because I think this would really muck up that cross-country pipeline work that essentially already done.
The Wildstone, have they bored under Ranch House Road yet?
I'm not sure about that. I don't think so.
Okay. Will there be, will there be any need to shut down that intersection of Ranch House and I-20 where the Taco Casa is or the Shell Station is?
There won't be any shutdown or close off of Ranch House Road. I can't remember off the top of my head where those bore pits are assigned. I believe those are past the Taco Casa and the Butter Burger driveways and then also past the gas station there on the east side. So that was the whole reason of doing the bore there is to limit any impacts on the businesses there.
Any, anticipate any issues at Farmer's Road on that bore?
No, the bore itself is done.
Okay, it is done.
The pipeline that is lined into that is still not complete.
Okay.
So that, you know, obviously, water could get in there if it continues to rain, but it doesn't create a big mud pit like it would if it opened in a striking situation. There's definitely problems there, and they're popping out. They can keep going, so.
Okay.
These are exciting times.
Yes.
Anything else for Preston?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we go, I wanted to thank the Fort Worth City Council and staff for
Yes.
for the amendments to this agreement to give us the extra 500K. That's, that's big for us. So I want to thank Chris and the guys at the Fort Worth Water.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Item number one, to consider an act to receive and accept a petition requesting annexation of a 20.31 acre tract of land situated in the A Macarver Survey, abstract number 910, Parker County, Texas, being a portion of that certain tract of land, described indeed to Bulwark Asset Management LTD, recorded in instrument number 201732162, Official Public Records, Parker County, Texas. Ms. Betty.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. Bulwark Access Management Limited is the petitioner and is requesting annexation of this 20.31 acre tract of land. It is vacant land. And the property is located in the northwest quadrant of the city in our exoterritorial jurisdiction and is located between Yucca Road and Royal. You can see on your two exhibits the area. Staff has received this petition. We would request that you adopt Resolution Number 2021.0608. And I do have a revised resolution for you. It better describes the property, and I'll pass these out to you. You do have in your packet the petition, also the annexation map. You have the resolutions. And your action would be to set a public hearing for the July 25th. You would think I would have enough since we have two members absent.
I would be happy to answer any questions regarding the staff's recommendation.
So we're here to set a resolution setting the date and time for a public hearing?
Yes, sir, and that is your next agenda item. And as I said, it is Resolution 2021-0608. And it does set the public hearing for the 13th day of July.
But for item one, the action is that to receive and accept the petition?
Yes.
We do need action on that for this current item?
Do we have a motion to accept the petition?
I'll make a motion that we accept, that we receive and accept the petition requesting annexation as discussed.
Any, do we have a second, please?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. And then item number two, to consider an act on adopting Resolution 21-0608, setting a public hearing for July 13, 2021, at 7:00 PM, to consider voluntary annexation of 20.31 acres of land located between Yucca Road and Royal View. That's just what you discussed.
Yes.
All right, we have the resolution. Do we have a motion, please?
I'll make the motion that we accept the Resolution Number 2021-0608, a resolution setting a date, time, and place for a public hearing on the proposed annexation of certain property by the city of Willow Park, Texas, and authorizing and directing the mayor to publish notice of such public hearing.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion for Betty? All in favor? Thank you. Item number three, public hearing discussion action, to consider an act on a request for a special use permit for an auto body repair, fully enclosed shop area, Lot 2, Block 1, Porter Edition, located in the 4900 block of Interstate 20, Service Road South. Public hearing is opened at 7:14 PM. Betty?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request for a special use permit. You will remember, a month or so ago, y'all included the auto repair, auto body shop with the enclosed facility to be with a special use permit in the commercial and the light industrial districts. This property is located in the commercial district in the I-20 overlay area in the 4900 block of the South Service Road. The proposal is for a 7,000-square-foot office building. There will also be 15,000 square feet of warehouse area for the fencing company and then another 20,000 square feet for the auto body repair shop. That's a total of 42,000 square feet. You also have an additional 9,000 square feet of fenced vehicle storage area. You can see the areas that are highlighted in pink. Those are the outside or the backs of the three-sided metal buildings that will, the fencing material will be in. And those will be solid walls. The yellow area, highlighted areas, will be a six-foot privacy western cedar fence. They will have sliding track gates. Planning and zoning commission held their public hearing and are recommending approval of the special use permit. There were actually three changes that were made. The first change that was recommended by staff and the commission has been incorporated into this site plan, and that was to take the two entrances that were adjacent to each other on Bankhead Highway and convert those to a single entrance. That has been done. There was also the seven additional parking spaces that were needed to be in compliance with the city's ordinance. And those are in the bubbled area that you can see. That would be on the east side of the property in the area around the warehouse. Those will be employee parking areas. So this, this does comply, the site plan does comply with the requirement for parking spaces now. And then, on your other exhibit that you have, there was verification on the look of the property or the look of the building from the, from the access road. And you can see that this is very similar. They will use a horizontal siding, which is the brown area. And then you can also see the gray area. That is the combination that they will have.
So they have done the verification by providing this to you?
Yes.
Yes.
As I said, this does come forth with a favorable recommendation from the planning and zoning commission for the special use permit. We have the landscape plan, which we included in your agenda packet. And then we had a few other elevations of the property to better let you see all, all of the signs. As I said, we do have the privacy fencing, which is primarily to the eastern side, as well as the buildings and also on the Bankhead Highway side, we do have the privacy fencing in the enclosure. I would be happy to answer any questions you have. We have a representative from Berenstark Engineering, who is an engineer for the project. If you have any additional questions.
Any other questions before we close the public hearing? Public hearing is closed at 7:18 PM. And item number four, nope.
Three B?
Three.
Three.
Three, I'm sorry. We need a motion for the special use permit, please.
I'll make a motion to approve a special use permit for Lot 2, Block 1, Porter Edition, City of Willow Park, Parker County, Texas.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Betty.
Thank you.
Good luck to you. Item number four, the city council may consider approval of a resolution calling a public hearing for consideration of the city's land use assumptions, future land use plan and capital improvements plan for the imposition of a stormwater drainage impact fee. Is that, Mr. Grimes?
Yes. This is part of the impact fee that we were going to do for new development. There was an error in the publication that ran previously in the community news. And so, as such, we need to start the process again from scratch. And so, we can get the ad in the paper this week and have a public hearing for the 13th of July at 7:00 PM. I need a motion as such. Pat, you want to add anything to that?
Yes, sir. Covered it.
All right, we have the motion on the, you have the motion? Do we have a?
We need a motion on it.
We need a motion on it. We have the motion in the deal here. So someone read that for us, please.
I move that.
All together now.
I move that Willow Park City Council passed a resolution that sets the public hearing for land use assumptions and capital improvements plan under which a stormwater drainage impact fee may be imposed for July 13, 2021, at the Willow Park City Hall. And authorize staff to make any applicable notice requirements.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions? All in favor? Thank you. Thank you for taking care of that. Item number five, we're, we've done. Item number six, to consider an act on setting dates and times on budget workshops and hearings for review preliminary value information from Parker County Appraisal District. Mr. Grimes?
Yes, staff has begun preparing the budget for the next fiscal year, which will start on October the 1st. We've had a lot of discussions about what their needs and wants are and how do we go about funding those needs and wants. I would like for staff to advise council and schedule a workshop with you guys, at least one. If y'all want to do more than one, staff's always willing to accommodate council. But I'd like to try to get some dates available for a potential workshop. It could be in conjunction with a council meeting. It could be a called meeting if you'd like. If we don't have a lot on the July 13 meeting, we could, we could take care of business and then have a workshop after that, if you'd prefer. But a couple of things, a couple of critical dates to keep in mind. We're, we're aiming, I'm going to have to work backwards a little bit on this. We're aiming to, to adopt the budget on August the 24th, which would mean we would run an ad in the community news on the 13th. Council would vote on a proposed tax rate on August the 10th. And I would have to file a preliminary budget with the city secretary on July 16. Now, keep in mind, it's a preliminary budget, so it can change. But those are all based off of state statute. The other critical piece of determining the tax rate, at least, is our certified values from the appraisal district. State statute says they have to get them to us by July 25. I believe that's a Sunday. And so, the following business day would be July 26. Typically, we get them before that, but this is the little last day we, we can get it or where they, they're required to get to us. Obviously, we've got some council dates in here. We've got a couple of council members that are going to be out for some, for some other meetings. We have to adopt your budget and tax rate by October 1. And so, clearly, the last meeting of September is cutting it any close anyway, and we will have a council member absent at that meeting. Last year, we did an August 11 workshop. We approved the proposed tax rate on September the 8th. Then we adopted the budget on the 22nd. So there's, it's not a, it's not as time-consuming as it was three or four years ago where we had to call a special meeting and we came in for 20 minutes and left. It's a little bit easier as far as that goes, but I wanted to give you guys a heads up on, on what this works at. The other thing is the notice. So I've got the community news. If they keep their published dates correct, here's our, the bevy of dates in August and September that we can run our publications in the community news. And then I've got some local government statutes in there as well. Before we get into the certified values, is there any questions on the calendar? Y'all have, we're shooting for August the 24th. That way, if something happens, we can always, we got a fail-safe of the 14th of September.
That's my question.
Yes.
So if something comes up at the public hearing on the 24th that we want to discuss and change, we can postpone it till?
Yes, yeah. If, and we could even do it on the, we could even do the 14th and postpone to the 28th, but some, some council members will not be here, and I'm pretty sure they'd want to be.
Are we setting a date for that now?
Well, what I, no, not right now. What I'd like to know is, we can, I guess. We can set that if you, if you're.
Let's set it.
So would we also want to set, you've got the potential budget workshop dates?
Yes.
Would we, would you feel comfortable starting on the 22nd? Do you feel you'd have all the information ready for some level of discussion, or is that too soon?
I think I could have, I think I could have two or three of the big departments ready.
You talking about June 22nd?
Yeah, June 22nd.
That'd be the next meeting.
Okay.
But we're, we're going to have a pretty lengthy meeting on that, as well.
Okay.
I don't think the, the agenda for the 13th of July, I think we've got a couple of public hearings we're going to have.
Right.
But I'm not, I'm not anticipating a heavy agenda on the 13th.
So if we set one for July 13th, do we have time to add July 27th if we want a second workshop before we act?
Yes.
So we could act on that, on the 13th, add that workshop?
The, the notification requirements on a workshop is at 72 hours, like you would for anything else.
Weeks of publication.
We can do the 22nd. It probably puts a little pressure on Carrie and Mike.
Let's do the 13th.
Yeah, 13th is good to me. I'd say, as long as we have an option for a second workshop if we feel like we're running out of time.
July, July 13th will be our, our first one.
But I do want to say this. Whatever comes out of the 13th, I'll, I'd have to file a preliminary. um, I'll, I, I'd have to file a preliminary budget with the city secretary. It says 30 days. So I've always put, I've always given myself a little bit flexibility in there. But so I will probably file preliminary budget with her anywhere from the 16th to the 24th of July.
That's fine.
You can do it.
Yeah, yeah.
Three days, that's enough.
Yeah. And that's more for if we have a workshop and then you see a budget filed, that doesn't necessarily mean that's the final product.
Okay, 13th is this.
Okay.
Do you need a motion?
Well, we're going to have it at 6:00. Are you going to have it in conjunction with regular meetings?
We could do, you could, we could have it at 6:00 if y'all want to. But.
We can do it in the middle, can't we?
We've had this before. You can do it in the middle of the meeting. We've had this before where we've met at 6 o'clock. The discussion started going a little long. Council meeting was about to start and we kind of, I felt like we didn't really complete the discussion. What we could do is in July is have our normal business on July 13th, public hearing and any other business we need to attend to, adjourn the meeting and then have a workshop five minutes after adjournment. Would that work, Pat? So you would, we would have a quick meeting, take care of business, and then do a workshop, uh, five minutes after.
Okay, I'm, I'm okay with that.
You are, okay. So let me ask you this. If we figure out, um, by June 22nd, like if we're going to set it for 7:00 PM after, if we're going to set the workshop for July 13th after the 7:00 PM council meeting ends. If we discover that we, at our next council meeting at the end of June, that we have a full agenda, can we switch it to 6:00 PM so that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we can change the time.
The only time I can't change is after we post it on the door.
Just so we have that 72-hour notice we can switch it.
If you want to conduct the public hear, I mean, the workshop at the end of the meeting, I wouldn't suggest adding a time to it. Just keep it part of.
Right, that's what I was, I just mean.
Just keep it part of the meeting.
If he starts telling me we have two hours of agenda items on the 13th, I don't want to say we're doing it five minutes after.
We'll play that by ear.
So do you need a motion for all those dates? Or how do you want that handled?
Um, yeah, I mean, we can.
We need a motion for July 13th, please.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the budget calendar as proposed with the July, with the July 13th budget workshop to follow the regular council meeting.
And just to clarify, that's to adopt, the, the idea is to adopt the budget on August the 24th?
Yes, the, as presented in the packet budget calendar for, at the fiscal year 2021, '22, on page 43 of the agenda.
Okay.
With a budget workshop July 13th.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
Okay, that's a vote on the dates. I want to go over, I want to go over your values real quick.
Oh, okay.
Um, this is not, this is not, there's no action for you guys to take because this is the preliminary that we get in. Um, this is a new form that the appraisal district sent out, and I like it a lot better than the previous years. It's a lot cleaner. So last year, our certified value was 651 million. This year, your cert, your preliminary taxable value is 711 million. That is a, a massive increase of obviously $60 million. Couple of things to point out. Your, your preliminary frozen tax levy is $384,000 and, uh, $384,197. Typically, we have seen a 10% up to 15% increase in that number every year. This represents a 3% increase, uh, from the previous year. So, um, uh, that's, that's a telling sign of, that the demographics are probably getting a little younger. The, the frozen tax levy is essentially your 65 and older exemption. And then you've got another 14.3 million of new construction on the books here. I think we'll probably see a whole lot more of that. They may double by this time next year. Roundabout way of saying, we're going to have more value to play with. And we have the ability to address some needs specifically in public safety, fire and PD. I think we can get a budget that will address most of those needs. Staffing, equipment, and other things of public safety. The current budget we operate under, 90% of property and sales tax goes to fund public safety. That number may actually go up in the new budget. I'd like to keep it around the same, but it may, may go up a little bit as well. That's also going to require additional revenues. And so additional revenues obviously means additional taxes. And so that's something I want you guys to be thinking about and considering. We think preliminarily right now that we can, um, meet most of the needs of public safety, and that's what we're focusing on, without raising the overall tax rate. And that's a key term right there. Because we think we can lower the interest and sinking rate by a penny and increase the M&amp;O rate by a penny, otherwise making it neutral. But that would provide more money into the M&amp;O for, uh, for our general fund. That's where we're sitting today. That may change. If the numbers come in lower than what I think, then this conversation is moot. But, um, we think we can get you there without raising the tax rate. But I will say this, it is a tax increase. You're probably looking at bringing in an extra, and I'm guessing here, 350,000, maybe 375,000 in, in revenues. But that is going to go to fund, I know, we had a discussion with Mike. Unless something happens and we get direction from council, we'll get the three additional firemen that he's been asking for. That'll take care of Carrie's compression and budget needs as well. We may have to, um, we may have to flatten out some of the equipment budgets and things of that nature. But we're, we're going to address the personnel issues in this budget. And that's going to require a financial commitment. So I'm just, I'm, I'm letting you know now.
Okay. Okay, item number seven, to consider an act on fire department budget amendment. Chief Lenore?
Thank you, Mayor. Hello, councilman, hello, citizen. I'm humbly requesting a increase in my overtime budget to 10,000. I've been played with, uh, an injured firefighter. It's been out for a while and expecting, uh, to not return to full active duty until August. And so with what I've presented, I feel that that's going to take care of my overtime budget, my overage that I have currently right now. Here to answer any questions that you might have.
So the $10,000, is that it?
Yes, sir.
We going to be able to pay for it out of the COVID?
Yes.
Yeah. The intentions to pay for the remaining, out of the remaining COVID funds. That's not going to draw down your COVID funds.
Okay.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion on approving the $10,000, uh, for overtime budget for the fire department.
Second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion for Mike? All in favor? Was that hard?
No, that's good, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, consider an act on items to be considered for future council meetings?
I have, I'm trying to add the notes and I got, I got, I'll get it. I know we're going to do a drainage report from Derek on the 22nd. Counsel, I apologize, I'm drawing a complete blank. I had the notes written down in my office. I know we're doing Derek, we're doing a.
How often, uh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I'm, I'm drawing a blank.
Half Preston, how, should they come in just once a month? Give us an update of what's going on? I mean, things are moving pretty quick.
I think, yeah, at least, every other month at least. But we're, you're at the point now in that project where, um, coming in in July, I don't know if we're going to know a whole lot more in July than we do.
But you could check with them, and if there's updates, they can come.
Yes, we, staff sits in, we have bi-weekly meetings for scheduling and issues and so on and so forth. They're kind of, the last meeting was kind of, you know, it's just been raining and there's not a whole lot we can do.
Or if something comes up?
Yeah, something comes up, as needed, I'll bring them in.
Okay.
And especially as we start doing the ground storage tank, the pump station. The thing that, that Michelle and I discussed is that when we get the water from Fort Worth, we're going to have to start worrying about blending and, and that's not necessarily half. It's more Michelle and Derek.
That's a good problem to have.
Water is a good thing to have.
Yes, it is. Okay, anything else?
Yes, speaking, I noticed my water meter is now installed at my house. I was going to see if we can get an update on that process and how everything has been this, to date, and who, what do we still lack? And how's the new implementation going?
That is, uh, that's actually, thank you, Rose, for texting me the picture of my whiteboard. That's actually on there. We're going to, uh, I'll have Michelle and the guys come in and do an update on the meters. I know that they're working diligently and we, we ran across a couple of issues that I think have been, shall we say, in the ground for a couple of years, that we're trying to work through and, and resolve. But, uh, overall, I think it's going to be a good, I, we're getting mixed results on the feedback. But I think it's, I think in the long term, it's going to be good. The other thing I have is, Pat asked, we're going to do the Willow Park Baptist Church property swap. You think we're ready to do that?
Well, the, as far as I know, there's no impediment to that. I asked for it, I called, tried to call the title company today. I've not heard back. But basically, a condition proceeding to us is receiving the funds for the Texas Water and Sewer Board. Have we received those yet?
Yes.
We didn't. So that's why I told them was on the 23rd. So, uh, so we've already gotten it, so I'll let them know. We have a deadline, of course, our contract expires July 31st. So, um, so it looks like we're in line to close in the next few weeks.
Great.
And so I'll, I'll let you know when that's, that setting date is.
Okay, great.
We'll do the, uh, I got, I've asked Derek to do the drainage fee update, the plan. Have we identified new trouble areas with, with the new rain coming in? Cost and maybe have a debt discussion as far as that goes, as far as we got the new fee. Do we, how do we, what's the best way to, to tackle solving the problem? I think we've, uh, I've got a parks board update and request note on here. So I'm going to defer to the, to the mayor pro tem on that, although.
I think we're going to set our next parks board in July, or in August. And so the parks board can meet with our new assistant city manager, Bill Funderburke, and, uh, just kind of talk about where we're going to go with that.
So you think we need to maybe move that on?
Yeah, I think we'll wait until we have another meeting to refresh.
Okay.
What the goals are.
The other thing I have on here is that with the additional projects for Fort Worth Water, the additional debt that we had to issue at the beginning of this year, and obviously now with the new wastewater treatment plant funding. And we have not done a rate study since, I think, 2016, maybe 2017? So it's, it's time for a new rate study. I've been in discussions with NextGen. I may have a resolution for you guys to approve a rate study to, to do that. It's good, it's good to have anyway, but we're going to have additional debt and whatnot that we need to factor in.
Okay.
All right, the only other thing I was going to say, and I don't know if it's in the next month or two, but, um, we had talked about updating the comp plan.
Comp plan.
The land use, um, whether, whether that's August or after budget season, but getting an update on.
Yes.
Getting that updated.
Yeah, that's, that's on my.
Yes, I figured it was a little bit further out than, than June, July, so.
I, I think I have it set for the second meeting in July.
Okay, perfect.
But don't hold me to that.
Okay.
I do want to say one, well, I didn't see matters come, so.
All right, uh, setting the date and time for the next council meeting is June 22nd, 7:00 PM. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Do we need a motion for that?
No, it's regular.
All right, it is what it is. City managers comments?
Um, Bill Funderburke has completed his first week here.
He came back.
He came back. We, we, we had a little bet going in the office he would actually, actually come back. And so he did. So I'm, I'm proud to say that Rose won the 20 bucks. No, Bill's been a, a great asset to this. He's already taken over a couple of, three different projects. And, uh, he's discovered the popularity of the new park, of the Cross Timbers Park. And so, uh, I just, I'm, I'm glad he's here. Welcome again, Bill. You've done a great job in the seven days you've been here. And so we expect the same results, uh, for the next seven years, eight years.
You should expect four.
Well, we want you here for the next 10 years. How's that sound? You, you and Betty.
I don't know if I'll be here the next 10 years. All right, Bill, welcome again. Thank you, and I know you're going to be a great addition. Any, anyone have anything else? Vacation time, I hope everyone gets away. Motion to adjourn?
If we adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Motion, Carrie?